Good evening, our March 18th, 2024 work session will come to order. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, I believe, all calls all set?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And this is going to be our workshop, so we'll be doing reports. I'll turn it over to Dr. DeBarbury to start us off.
Thank you. So, we're excited this evening to be providing our department updates. So, we have a presentation we're going to have on the screen for you. We apologize for the factual issues this evening.
As we do thank everybody for joining us. We have a few extras, but we're always glad to have any guests. For most of them, I mean, certain people, I don't know. Generally, yes.
So, this evening, we have each of the core areas. All of our assistant superintendents are going to be providing updates with their teams, the directors that will oversee various departments. And so, we'll first begin with just a recap of our building, educating and empowering our 10 pillars that we have related to our strategic plan. You're going to see this evening throughout the entire presentation that everything that's going on within all of our departments connects back to our strategic plan and our priority areas. I also want to point out that the information you see at the end of the presentation, you'll notice areas that are of priority for this year, how many times the presentation highlights those specific priorities. It'll make more sense when we get to the final slide of this presentation. What I'll ask you to do too is as they move from department to department, certainly ask questions. We want this to be a dialogue back and forth so they have some prepared thoughts that they're going to share with you, but definitely interrupt and ask questions. We want this more to be a dialogue rather than just a presentation. So, with that, I will turn things over first to you, Dan Kilcor. Who wants to give us updates on our resources department?
I'll keep it short and sweet for you guys. Just to start out with recruitment, just a couple of small things. We've been trying different things in recruitment. Done a lot of what we're doing with recruitment, working with Sarah Buckshot, doing a lot of stuff on her social media. We've also done some virtual job fairs. To be honest, they're not the best, the virtual ones. So, Tony, Christina, and I will be going in April to Buffalo to an in-person job fair. We already got people signing up. We'll hopefully be able to meet some people and make some recruits, some new teachers for Baldur's. So, that's really, you know, when it comes to that piece of the recruitment. If you go down to the other piece that we've been working with, with the Baldonza candidates that's connected to Syracuse University. With that, we currently have two people here right now that are finishing up student teaching, finishing up those placements. They will be teaching with us next year. One, a social studies teacher at secondary level. We have an elementary teacher. We also have slated to start the program for next year, an elementary teacher and a secondary English teacher to start the program for next year. So, we're kind of excited about those things because not only is that a big piece to our recruitment, but it's also meeting those, you know, diversity and equity needs that we want to have for our staff. And then, formalizing the interview process. This is something we've been working on with Cabinet, with some help from Danielle. Really putting together a process. So, we're going through multiple steps of screening candidates. So, these screening candidates are, you know, from my office to ensure that the candidates have the, you know, right education and certification, you know, requirements met. And we move them on to our directors who are going through and having a short screening interview to them so that we're moving forward our best highly qualified candidates to our committee interviews, which will be, you know, made up of our building administration as well as staff who live in those buildings. And then, moving those on to our finalists to performance interviews with our assistant superintendent program and also the superintendent to determine who, you know, we're going to hire. So, that's really, you know, we just started that process. And I can tell you, the big piece of that is that it's, we're ensuring that we're screening all the applicants. We're not just, you know, getting a pool and picking out, you know, a few people. We're ensuring this process is going through. We're, you know, looking at every single candidate that we have based on his criteria and who went up for it so we can sure we have the best quality candidates. I don't know if you want to take questions in between those, Joe? Or?
Can I just ask you, the job fair you're going to Buffalo, is that just for education?
That's just for education. We've also attended some other, we attended a job fair at Syracuse University recently where it was more broad scope. But it's really hard. I think you have to either go to the focus groups when you're having those job fairs. So, you know, the plan is to get the job fairs and look at, you know, specifically for teaching. And then, if there's other job fairs and things out there that we can look at to, you know, recruit other staff, you know, bus drivers, facilities, things like that. One of the things I just actually heard on the radio, and I want to bring it forward, is I'm hearing advertisements on the radio and things now for people, hey, if you want to be, you know, a bus driver in this district, apply here, you know. So, I think if we can start reaching those things, like I said before, working with Sarah Buckshot, really, that's where you hit the most. It seems like social media is the biggest thing for you, Bob.
Do we do Indeed? I keep your Indeed every five minutes.
We do, we do Indeed. That's part of our school front. So, the things when they're posted on our school front website, it hits some of those big recruit companies. But the majority of educators, when you're looking at teachers, are not really applying through those sites. That's not really what we're looking. They're either seeing local advertisements or calling and searching for those positions.
And I know, take us through your interview process because I know at one time, we had a very rigorous interview process, which I thought was great. And I do, the other thing I just want to comment on is the tenure sheet we saw. That's tenure track. That's great. Wonderful.
So, to take you through the process, like I said before, right now, it is a rigorous process. We're screening at my level to ensure that everyone has a certification in place. They go through a screening process to, you know, then narrow that out or have face-to-face or, you know, virtual interviews with our directors. And then, they're going to a committee interview. Those committee interviews, you know, are made up of, you know, teachers, teaching assistants, the building administration. Sometimes the directors will sit on those as well to then narrow that pool down to, you know, probably a couple of finalists who then sit and, again, we do still do that performance interview. I think it's a pretty rigorous piece in that.
That's great.
Dave, I really appreciate your sharing about what you're doing to attract teachers because I was reading an article recently that, you know, there's such a shortage around the country of teachers. In that article, they also mentioned administrators, that teachers interested in, you know, getting into school administration is just, you know, just not there. And I don't know if that's a problem in Baldonza though?
So, it is a problem everywhere. What I can say is the great thing that we're doing in Baldonza though is our connection to Syracuse University where we're having growing our own. And people are applying, and Joe wants to speak to going into Syracuse program to get their administrative certificate. And then, many of them we've hired, we've hired not because when we look at the candidate pool out there, many of the candidates that we're getting are not equal to what we're growing within our district. And part of that is because of all of you allowing us to have this great internship. Many of the administrators that we're interviewing, their internships are not like ours are. They're piecemealed and they're not getting that experience that's, you know, making people so successful.
I'm just going to add, so that Leadership Fellows Program began just before COVID here in the district where we had, I think we're up to now applications for the six cohorts. So, it's a four-year process unless folks decide to expedite that. But it does end in that full-year internship that we had in our secondary buildings.
And then, just quickly with this additional SROs, we have hired additional SROs, including Baker and Derry. If that's working out great, maybe that's a lot of actual support that we needed. You know, running into, you know, small issues, large issues, but, you know, just issues with kids in general. They're able to support the administration, but also support the students and families and ensure that that's taken care of. Then, you know, our professional learning for staff, really, that's, we've done a ton with that when it comes to safety. We have armor-one training and all of that that's recently been through. We've done vector trainings, you know, in relation to school intruders and how to support that. We do have, last year, a bunch of us went to Safety Summit in Albany. This year, we'll be sending some organs there just to that. Again, to, you know, work with, for a couple of days with the state level and get the information about more and safety stuff that we're, you know, utilizing similar to what we're doing with the levels detection systems. So, that's really good with that. And one of the things they've done, I'll let Carrie speak to this, is a threat assessment. And you want to speak to that?
Sure. So, you know, with safety and security, we hear a lot about all the things that we're doing to secure our buildings, SROs, security measures. One of the things that comes up whenever you hear of a situation, a safety issue is, you know, the actual profile of those person who is violent. And over and over, you'll hear there were, I think I hear, or I hear, I know you hear, the red flags that were there with that person. And what are we doing? We knew, right? Like, we knew there were all these red flags. And so, with threat assessment, this is a piece under Joe's leadership that, you know, to be collaborative as departments, but also taking a look at some of those pieces, how can we be proactive and preventative? So, we were able to go to a threat assessment thing through the county where it's all about collaboration and working with different departments. So, SROs, county mental health providers, and then administrators, school counselors. We all brought a team. And we talked about what does this look like and how can we do a better job identifying some of those risks and be preventative for students that maybe are at risk. One of the things that comes up over and over is, you know, historically, you can talk about discipline, right? And students can be suspended and we can take that hard line with students. But does that person become not a threat to us anymore? If they're suspended, right? They're still in our community. We talk about this all the time. Our schools are saying, well, what about malls or movie theaters? Like, is that, is that person no longer a threat to us now because we've suspended them from school? And we also were able to go to Keno Murphy and had, they had a, I guess he's a retired police officer, but he does this whole trauma resilience presentation. And he walked us through the Parkland shooting. And again, one of the things that stood out was all of the things that happened with this student prior to that incident and how do we all get on a better page and be collaborative? So, we sat through this threat assessment protocol and we're bringing it back to the district. So, a lot more to come because it's in a sort of a pilot stage. We're still waiting for the county on some pieces. But we have moved ahead and we're really working on, you know, it's a multidisciplinary approach. It's collaboration, working with the county, working with the sheriff's department. It's a systematic approach, but it's all about how do we identify these students sooner and what can we do to help them so that it doesn't become a bigger issue?
I just want to mention, that's great to see Tauponak who lead in that regard. I was a part, like you asked, of the county task force that came up with the county report after Parkland. Dr. Ghol and so many of the county partners that have thought, studied Parkland, studied the data. Unfortunately, we had a lot of data. And how schools should respond to that is, we have access to a library of actual school tools. So, anything I can do connecting with community partners too.
We actually, on the PDC date coming up, will be working in two of the sessions, Jenna and I, with the SROs, the school counselors, psychologists, just kind of finalizing some of those pieces. And we're currently piloting some specific cases.
All righty. Hello, everyone. How are you? I've got some notes here just to make sure I get all my info for you. The new sport offerings that we offer this year were girls wrestling and flag football. Girls wrestling is becoming a fast-growing sport in America. This year, we added girls wrestling. We had 11 girls start and finish the season. And the numbers are projected to go up with the Pee-wee wrestlers that we do have coming through, which is great. The nice part with starting flag football is we had a total of 48 girls that tried out, which is an awful lot of girls to try out for one team. Unfortunately, we have to make tough decisions and we weren't able to bring those numbers down to about 25. So, this will be great for the first spring season. And as everyone, you know, knows, having, you know, the world that the kids are living in and being able to have something positive to feel good about yourself leads into doing well in the classroom with your friends, family, learn to work together cooperatively, you know, trying to build some type of memory that could last for a lifetime. So, adding those sports have definitely been helpful. And we will continue to monitor numbers as they come in in the future with other sports. We did have a cool fact, some of you are aware. We had a diver this year participate. And because of his 11 points in sectionals, it led to the combination of our swimmers. And we won our first section title, which was pretty cool to be a part of. And Junior Nicholas Pampa was the diver and had an exceptional year, one to remember, obviously. And definitely, we're proud of him and the boys for that. The other piece that I'm really excited about is we're getting the Athletic Hall of Fame back up and running for, I can't, I mean, it's been a little bit, but the bottom line is we're working with community members to, the biggest part is connecting our past elite student athletes with our present student athletes. And that's a huge piece so that they can see the parallel between them and our past athletes. And we're going to do the presentation ceremony right before our athletic banquet in June. Our plan is to announce the candidates early, middle of April, get the word out for them and so that they'll know in advance that of the ceremony that we're doing in June for them. We've got a lot of athletes that need to be recognized and we're looking forward to doing that this year. Our last part is our lifeguarding course. The facts are, and we hear it every year, is there's a major shortage of lifeguards throughout, I mean, the state, you know, the nation, our area. We get calls from the YMCA, Radisson, City of Syracuse about lifeguards. Coach Sweeney has been an advocate of lifeguarding and doing that on, you know, for herself in the summer. But she's always asked to see if we could get a class. So, this year, we did. We had a total of 11 students that did a first semester class. They're all certified. They passed the exam, which will now give us the option to now have certified lifeguards for our season, for boys and girls swim, for sharks, and also for summer jobs if it's something they're looking at. It allows our activities to be safe, to be done right. And Coach said that it was an awesome class. They hope that it does grow so that we'll have more students that are certified. And those are the happenings in athletics, P and H.
So, I just have to chime in because I've heard from Chris some of the stuff they're going through. And it is incredible. We had a team, a baseball team in the 30s, I believe, into the 40s that won over 100 games straight, national record. Had all sorts of amazing athletes through those years that would be nice to let current kids know about.
Absolutely.
And of course, had some pretty good teams recently, it seems like, like a couple of lacrosse championships. And the first swimming championship in section is pretty cool.
Yeah, it's definitely cool. Looking forward to keeping that going on as well.
The other piece I will add with the Hall of Fame. So, that area will be refreshed in the upcoming of Baker High School renovation. So, even though, you know, we're working through the process right now and they'll have obviously plaques that's similar to what they've used in the past, I do think though, after we get through this project, you're going to see that completely re-envisioned. And it's going to be a lot nicer space to ultimately recognize these people that have, you know, represented Baldonza well over the many years.
Yep.
I remember last year, sorry, I picked up in front of somebody, that there was issues with officials. Is that still an issue or has that improved?
It is, unfortunately. We're trying to get the word out, you know. And another part is, as we talked about that lifeguarding course, I know as athletic directors, we're looking at the officials part of it too. You know, for student athletics that would look to become an official. I don't know if it's going to get any better, but it definitely is something that we're still dealing with. We're just trying to find as many different avenues that we can be creative with to make sure that we have the appropriate personnel there for the games. But it's definitely something on the forefront that we want to make sure we take care of as well.
Can you just caution to Thomas and Chris? Transition to Kim for our conserves update.
So, I think the biggest thing to celebrate this year is the fact that we were eligible for community eligibility starting in January. And I know we should have shared some of those numbers, but it's pretty impressive when you look at how many students are consuming meals in our cafeterias this year compared to last year. So, we took some quick numbers in January. For breakfast, we were up 83%, an increase of 83%. At lunch, an increase of 63%. The total reimbursement coming in, now, this is before expenses, so it's a little skewed, probably full disclosure, 167% increase in our revenue or in the amount of reimbursement coming in. And in February, and we like to compare the month to the month each year from the previous year so that we're taking into account days off, vacations, all those kinds of things. So, in February, our breakfast was up 121%. And our lunch was up 83%. So, you can see with both of those numbers, we're still growing. And our total reimbursement was up over 200%. So, that's very impressive with our cafeteria alone. And the other thing that just came up is I had a call from a principal saying, you know, we're going on a field trip and we need to figure out how to feed students while we're there. And I'm like, wait, we can do that now. So, just talk to, you know, Donna and she can do bag meals and it all can be incorporated in. So, we're not trying to figure out how we can fund those kinds of things, which is another, a great thing. So, that's terrific. We are in that program for five years as long as it's not being changed with our brain structure. So, that is a good thing. In regards to local produce and access to, you know, fruits, vegetables, any of those things, whenever we have an opportunity, we try to be local. Obviously, with our growing season here, that's a little bit limited. But Donna's always looking at those things as we move forward. So, any questions about cafeteria service stuff? All right, we'll move on to building conditions survey. We have completed our building conditions. It's been submitted in a timely fashion. We will be reviewing this at the next facilities meeting that does occur every five years. Just real quick, the building conditions survey is more about the structural and the safety and health and wellness things versus what funding the future is really doing for us is looking at our structure. So, I'll talk more about that a little bit farther. The Smart Schools Bond Act, obviously, we have been talking about the threat detection units, which we continue to get closer and closer to. We did get approval. We're the first district that will be able to buy those through Smart Schools. So, we are just waiting for an amendment and we should be able to place that order in the next week or so. The good news is those threat detection units that the state is allowing us to purchase with these funds, the evolved units, have come out in price. So, we are strategically figuring out a way to have one of those units at least for every elementary school in addition to Ray and Derry by next year. And then, we have some other units that we're stuck to that we can backfill with for other areas. So, that public hearing was done last April. We also had video surveillance cameras involved with those and protective film. So, we have a little bit of leeway with the monies that we went out with, with the total amount that we can ship those to make sure that we can buy those threat detection units as we talked about. Any questions for that?
So, just one question. I know, I believe some schools are starting to implement detectors in bathrooms that detect vaping in bathrooms.
We have talked about that. We've gone back and forth. We did get some money from the Juul settlement. I'll let Dr. DeBarbury speak about that.
So, that's coming in phases. I believe it was like $80,000 total for the first settlement that we'll be getting. And the thought was initially to take that funding and utilize it back in that area specifically. So, whether it be training for students, we do the vape educate and/or the purchase of those devices for our bathrooms. And, you know, I think I put in an email to you over the weekend, Chris Denton, there have been some issues with vaping recently in our bathrooms, more so than in prior years. And so, it definitely is an area of focus. So, our hope is that when we get that funding in, that we will be able to just work with our vendor to make that work in our system. And my understanding is some of the newer technology does tie right into our security system that we currently have so that we're all getting the same alerts that we would be getting if there was some other type of breach. That's how that technology works.
I have two quick questions. Are we going to be doing the facility tours this year that we did with Rick last year? Or is that not an annual thing?
We have talked about the fact that we had that funding improvement in building the future. Did I say it right? Funding improvements in building the future committee at every building that at that point, people were comfortable with that. But, I mean, obviously, we can revisit it if we need to. But we, because we are in every building during all of those meetings during those tours.
Okay. And then, my second question is, once we get the new threat detection systems, what do we do with the old ones?
We'll still use them. We have many entryways, so that allows us to put some of the ones that we have been using in like an ancillary or secondary entry. And these will be in our primary, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Because it does speed the process up is what our thought is. And in regards to capital improvement projects, I think we all know we have $100 million worth of capital projects approved by our motors right now. And we are working with SED to get approval on additional projects. The Derry project, we did go out to bid. We will be asking the board to take some action later tonight with that. It was tight. It's the environment that we're living in, working in right now. We're confident with the contractors that we have in place that that will continue to move forward. So, that work is on schedule to start, hopefully, April break. The building is preparing for that to occur. The 2023 capital improvement project for 63.9 million, that is the Baker work, the pool, the fields. We are still waiting on approval. We've broken that project apart, so the fields are still sitting in facilities. Dr. DeBarbury had some communication with them today.
They did, and we're still sitting in there?
They did indicate though, they did receive my letter that I think I put in the Friday communication to a week or two ago. And I did receive a response back. At this point, you know, they're still indicating that there's about 100 submissions prior to our submission that they're still working through. My thoughts are that they're probably not significant projects. I mean, ours is 7 million of our 63.9. But our hope is that they will continue to stay on track so that we get approval at April, May, June timeframe so that we can begin our work on the fields so that our public starts to see some end product of their approval of these votes. That being said, now is probably a good time to publicly say too, I had a conversation with Vic on Friday. We did perceive some feedback from our legal counsel regarding what's commonly known as piggybacking or cooperative bidding. There's been a lot in the field where schools and other entities are taking advantage of cooperative bidding. And as the board, those members that were on the board in the facilities committee prior to this year, as we were going out with the 63.9 million dollar project, the discussion for our field specifically was trying to utilize the cooperative bidding so that we could get was trying to utilize the cooperative bidding so that we could get this completed sooner rather than later so that our students could benefit from that space. So that still is the case, but we have had it run through our legal counsel. There's some varying opinions that are out there and I want to just make the board and our community aware. You know, if we continue to move forward, which is what we said we were going to do with our community, that there have been a few challenges, nothing that's been bound to be in violation of rules and regulations, but there have been a few challenges across the state, specifically with field work. Because typically those types of products, projects are bid out. Specifically speaking with the project that we have going on here, you know, the vendor field turf potentially that we could be utilizing through cooperative bidding, there is a way within that because the cooperative bidding allows for the installation and maintenance of equipment and field turf, obviously. In order for us to do that work, you actually have to have the site prepared. So that is a part of the bid and that's where there's been some challenges. There was Ayush Sharan Hoa is a school district out in the Albany area. It was challenged by a couple of vendors who obviously didn't have the opportunity to bid. But I think from our perspective, legal counsel has written us an opinion where we met the various requirements, where this would be permissible. The one area where they are needing assistance from our legal or from our architects is that, and they're willing to do this, is to just basically agree and attest to the fact or certify that the work, the site work is related to the installation. So if we have that documentation, then if for some reason we were to be challenged in this case, which again, any, Oswego's a city school district that recently had a challenge, but it was thrown out. We're basically protected and covered. But I want the board to know that there is some potential risk in that. I do think that, you know, proceeding forward with this is going to allow us to stay on track to hopefully having SED approval, begin that work this summer so that we can meet our timelines in allowing our current juniors an experience on those fields by the time they graduate at the end of next year. So I don't know if there's any concerns with that, but I just wanted to put that on record.
So if I understood the process, typically we wait for full approval before we do any bids. However, approval is so slow these days and with inflation, the cost goes up and up and up. So the sooner you can get a bid, your cost will probably be lower and you can get started quicker once you have full approval. So that's the idea of a cooperative bidding.
So I'm just gonna, yeah, so the cooperative bid, I was just gonna say, so really with a cooperative bid, what would lock us into that is doing a letter of intent right now, similar to what we do with our school buses. So that contractor knows, once we get approval, we plan to use you and they can start securing the products that they need to do that work. So it's a little bit different than waiting to go out to bid after the fact, which we're getting late now. We just had bids that were tight. So we know what the bidding market is. We have some other things that we're going to be watching to see if our theory holds true. So there's another district locally that did plan to do cooperative, the cooperative process like we are, but they decided to go out to bid afterwards. So that's going to be a very good example that we can share with you in the weekly letter, that this is what happened. Now mind you, we're still early, so the longer we wait and we're getting into that peak time, the higher those numbers are going to be if you go out to bid. With this project, there's multiple factors of using that cooperative piggybacking. So we can get into more detail with that at the facilities meeting. But this is the key piece that we need because if we don't have the site work, we can't have turf.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does that bidding have to do with if you hire a particular vendor, they have another vendor that they utilize to do, say, the site work before you put the turf on. But if it's substantially related, then the risk is lower.
Okay.
But I would assume that's probably true of any of those types of vendors that they have preferred other vendors.
Yeah, and our legal counsel, you know, Kim and I were on the phone quite a bit last week. You know, they take a very conservative approach when it comes to this, where, you know, they're making sure that we're in a position where we dotted our i's and crossed our t's so that if there is a challenge, we're in a good place. And, you know, I could go through and read all the requirements that, you know, they made sure that we're consistent with. But, you know, our board policy, their board policy that we're in alignment with. You know, the initial contract is within, you know, this US territory, state, et cetera, meets that requirement. The contract has been advertised in a manner consistent with New York State competitive bidding laws. The initial contract has to be made available for use by other government entities. Has, the initial contract must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder on the basis of best value, which is consistent with New York State competitive bidding law. It is, there's not a lot of field turf companies out there. It's consistent to the company that we utilize for the Altrara Stadium. And then the final piece is that the agreement must contain only equipment and services with the scope of the initial contract. And that's where that relation to the installation, maintenance or repair factor is covered under this, assuming that we have the architectural certification. So we're working with King &amp; King and Appel Osborne, who are landscape architects, to make sure that they have that certification in hand. So we have it on file in the event that somebody chooses to challenge that. I will also point out that there's other site work in that sixty-three point nine million dollar project at Baker High School for the parking and the, what was previously referred to as the roadway, which is no longer. So at facilities meeting, we can show those examples. So I think it's important to note that, you know, we are still going to be bidding other portions of site work in the larger projects. It's just for this specific component, in order to meet our timelines and, you know, create experiences for students sooner rather than later, we feel like this is the most effective way.
Can I just pull the food service for a second? Now that I've had a chance to mull this over. I know that that department is supposed to be self-sustaining, so it's good news when there's an increase in revenue. I'm curious, is the increase in revenue tied to the increase in volume of meals served? Or is it tied to the fact that we get the funding that's greater per pupil than what we would typically charge? And I so appreciate you bringing that up because I think this is the first time I've ever talked about food service and not pointed that out, but it's a standalone. So I appreciate that reminder. And I think it's both because the numbers are definitely up and everybody is at that reimbursement rate. So there's no à la carte pricing anymore. If you remember, we had to keep increasing the breakfast and lunch prices even though everybody was like always hesitant to because there was a standard of what you had to increase to get it up to the appropriate level that it was required to be. So it's definitely a combination. Now keep in mind, obviously we're buying more food because we're selling or giving out more food. But at the same point, we are also still struggling with staffing in that department. And even though we're bringing people in, hiring them, training them, our retention is not great for whatever reason. It's a short amount of time that people are working. And I think the niche of people that were looking for that work can work their moat now. As opposed to those people that were looking for that in-between, like get your student on the bus and be home at the end of the day. There's a lot of other options out there now that didn't used to exist for that. We are looking at some restructuring in that department though. We have some retirements coming up and we're trying to restructure where it gives us a little more support. Honestly, Donna's out serving food. Donna's moving food. Like Donna's doing a lot of work that she needs to be focused on doing other things. And she's great about doing it all, but it's a lot right now with not having the hands to help serve. So, thank you. So in addition to, we're done with the capital improvements. The one other thing I wanted to bring up is just funding improvements and building the future. Obviously that report came back to the board, which was really more focused on how are we using our buildings, the instructional benefits, and how do we utilize all of our buildings going forward for the best way possible for our district. I think there's more to come on that. We've had one community cafe.
Definitely received obviously feedback from the board. We'll continue to have more detailed discussions at the next facilities committee meeting. But we do anticipate, you know, other opportunities for our community to weigh in once we have a better sense of, you know, where the board stands with the various options. And I know a lot of that will depend on the work moving forward with the facilities committee and how do we make all of this happen in a way that is ultimately physically responsive to our community so that we're maximizing the aid that we're able to generate on all of these projects. And we know that we need a clear direction and plan to follow because this work just takes so much time.
So at the facilities committee meeting, we will really focus on the financial piece of that and put some schedules together to also be able to look at that in conjunction with that work that's coming. And then transportation. So in regards to transportation, we've been looking at a lot of technology updates in that department. If you notice our buses compared to other districts, you can read the front of them that say school bus because we have retrofitted all of those to the LED, which really stand out a lot. I can tell about one of our buses, a long ways away now because you can actually see that sign, which is great. We have GPSs on all of our buses, so we can track them in real time. We have cameras. We've updated our camera system to be more efficient. We've updated navigation controls on our buses in regards to like backup cameras and those kinds of things. As we're ordering up lights outside the door. In addition to that, we are also looking at buying tablets for every bus that will link into our system that we use versus, which will now be web-based versus held on a server. And by doing that, the drivers will be able to see their routes on those. They'll be able to talk to them versus having a paper and trying to do those routes in the dark with a light on. Bless you. In addition to that, it will also help us with our pre-trips and some of our documentation. So we're not doing everything on paper and then having to have somebody else enter that stuff in. So those are all positive things that we're going in the right direction.
Can I just ask, so what's the shortage? We talked about paying in people during training. Have we made a decision on that or is that?
That was my guess.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. I was too early. Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Thank you. So yes, we have definitely discussed the fact of alternate ways of training. There's been some discussion within the department and our primary trainer has actually brought this up to me on more than one occasion. How can he train in non-work hours, so to speak? So how can he be training people in the evening or on the weekends so that maybe we can expedite and increase that pool? So I think those are a couple of things that we're invested in working on. We did have somebody just go and take a test this week. So we still do have a few people coming through the pipeline, but definitely if we could get some alternate training times and however we're going to work that out with incentivizing people, that's definitely still on the radar.
So we anticipate in the future board meeting, just approving and updating with the non-contractual rates of pay because we will have to officially, as a board, we will have to document or approve whatever rate we utilize for the training. We will transition now to health services and with Katie Gisoli here.
I'm Katie Gisoli for those I haven't gotten a chance to meet. Thanks for having me. I oversee our health services department as the school nurse supervisor. So tonight I want to talk a little bit about all the awesome things going on in health services for not only our students, but our staff and the community. The first bullet point there is highlighting our alternate instruction. So this bullet here tonight, I want to share the process in which we follow when we have a student that may not fit the I teach a school from seven thirty to thirty schedule. Given the changes in our mental health in the community, medical needs, what I have done is I've worked with our student services department over the past three years and kind of said, how can we meet the students' needs, mental health and medical, while trying to continue the resources that they need to be successful? So what I have done is I've developed really nice relationships with community medical providers, psychologists, psychiatrists, pediatricians, social workers, anyone who supports our students outside of school. I collaborate with them when we get an order for a schedule that's not the typical school day. So I collaborate with those providers. I speak with parents, the students and say, this appears to be the medical need or the mental health need. How can we meet your needs? Some of the alternate instruction options that we offer here in the district that's not the typical school day consists of a modified day, meaning the student may come in later. They suffer migraines, let's say, in the morning and may do better in the afternoon. So how can we meet when they're feeling well enough to learn? We also offer a two to five program, which is how that our old transportation center, the student services building, that allows students to have a smaller educational environment where they come to school from two to five. And then we also have the option of home instruction for those students that really can't make it into school, whether it's they just had a major surgery or something kind of life-changing in their event or in their life. So really the numbers, I think, speak for themselves. So coming off of the COVID remote year of 2021, in 2022 school year, we had sixty-seven students doing an alternate instruction program. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we had fifty-seven students. And then this year so far, we've only had twenty-eight. And so I think that goes to show that that collaboration upfront is what is the need of the student? How can we help meet those needs and how can we get them back in our buildings where all of the supports are for them to have? So it's really been exciting to see and we've developed some really nice relationships with the medical providers in our area. So that's a little bit about alternate instruction. Professional learning has been wonderful here in the district for the past couple of years. We continue to offer CPR and AED to staff members. This will be the third consecutive PDC day, which we've offered it to willing staff members that just say, hey, I want to get trained, changed in what happens when a cardiac arrest happens. Evidence showed that cardiac arrest increases in the winter months. So now is a great time for anyone, or anytime is a great time for anyone to get trained for that. So we've been lucky enough to offer it to staff. We also had our local ambulance service, AMR, come and do a stop the bleed training for the nursing staff and our whole health services department. So if there were to be a tragic event where we had excessive bleeding due to some tragedy, the health services team is trained to respond to open wounds, things of that nature. So that was a great educational piece that we had on our PDC day. We've also hosted the New York State Department of Health Immunization Bureau. So that is the department that would come and audit our school records for immunization. They would come in, they pick randomly what schools are going to audit for immunizations. So I had invited them to come and speak to the nursing team about immunizations and kind of going through New York State requirements more than I do routinely with the nurses themselves. We also offer Narcan training throughout the district for unlicensed willing staff members. The district has an opioid overdose prevention program, meaning we stock Narcan through New York State in our health offices and in all of our AEDs. So we're constantly encouraging staff, training willing staff members, myself, that want to get trained. So in the event of an unfortunate overdose, we are prepared to respond and to save a life. So I'd say this year, we've probably done almost sixty trainings for unlicensed willing staff, which is great. A little bit about access to services. The district, one piece I want to highlight is we recently held, as recent as last week, we held the Upstate mammography mobile unit. So Upstate, this is our third year partnering with them. We have coordinated, so they bring their big pink mammography van and they parked it outside the student services center. And they offer mammograms, screening mammograms to those in need that may not have gone to the city because they don't like driving to the city, but they still want access to care. They recommend that you have a provider order for a screening mammogram, but they will do a one-time courtesy screening mammogram and a clinical breast exam for women in need, which is great. and a clinical breast exam for women in need, which is great. And they're coming back in June again. So the past couple of years, we've had about twenty participants, which is really great. It gives people the opportunity to get that screening care here. Other clinics that we've held, we've held flu clinics, not only for staff, but staff and their families. So we host those every fall in partnership with Wegmans. And then we also continue, or I continue to collaborate with our Anadogu County Health Department on how we can get our students the required immunizations to stay in school. We've had an increase in students coming to Baldmanville from out of the country and immunizations are required for school attendance. So I've kind of partnered with them and worked with them in getting students their immunizations to start and then worked with local providers that have been so kind to take our students to get them those immunizations that they need to stay at school with us.
Good question. Is the stop the bleed education available for others, teachers and staff throughout the district?
So that's a great question. So it has, and I don't see why we wouldn't, we would stop offering it. So the district has a medical emergency response team. It's where we offer additional training for staff that's unlicensed to help us as the potentially one sole medical provider in the school building to say, in the event of a medical emergency, would you be willing to be part of the team to run through drills, to give an epipen if you were trained, to have additional stop the bleed training, of course, as we hold the training during the summer.
Is that linked with your CPR and first aid offerings?
Anyone who is on our medical emergency response team has to do CPR and first aid training.
So I guess my question is more outside of your response team. Like you said that any willing or staff that wants to take a first aid or CPR of course have the opportunity. Is that equally available for that stop the bleed?
We've set it up in conjunction of that, but we wouldn't exclude anybody. But typically those that are willing to do one, want to be a part of the medical emergency response team. And we appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely. Just coming from a background of mad events post-brief after, as well as the importance, whether it be a mass incident or just somebody that simply slipped, fell, cut an artery, stop the bleed is, seems to be just as important as like a basic first aid or CPR, especially in a setting where there's a lot of people. So I just, I think it's great. And obviously the more we can encourage all staff to gain those certifications, the better off we would be.
And the bottom of staff?
No, no, I'm sorry. I just wanted to second that. One of the, one of the major data points that came out of the study of mass events was if the full staff was trained in stop the bleed, it might have been a major, not as the doctors would have been asthmatic or different. So it's just, it's proven to be one of the most essential trainings. Yeah, absolutely. And this is all, my questions are all data-driven and it's through all of the past events that was one of the biggest findings is preventable bleeding injuries ended up in poor outcomes.
Across the district, we have a stop the bleed kit in every health office and then in every AED, there's a stop the bleed kit.
Any other questions?
Just a question. I don't know if you know by any chance, last year there was a blood draw done at my school, at Wicker. I don't, I wasn't sure. I was going to see if you know if this returning this year at all.
That? Unfortunately, I didn't coordinate, so I don't have the answer for you, but I certainly can look into that.
Any chance? Because that's something I missed out on chance to last year. So I think it's something that was, I seen amazing for our school. I know, I think a lot of students wanted to do it. So I know you probably didn't coordinate it, but if that's anything that you, like your area of expertise would be interested in the future?
Yeah.
Kind of organizing, I think that would be just like, it would be very beneficial. I know there was, there was a shortage, I believe, in like, don't, in like for blood for like donations like a year or two years ago. So I mean, anything around that, I can, we absolutely can look into that.
Transition to more Student Services?
So the school counseling programs and programs are a little misleading, I guess, because it really encompasses so much. Really includes our school psychologists, our counselors, our social workers, our teachers, like everybody. And all of the things that we do within those programs to support students' wellbeing overall. So, you know, it includes a lot of things. Our Liberty Resource Clinics, Promise Zone, Access Specialists, all of those things that go into that plan. The program is sort of guided by this comprehensive school counseling plan that you can find on our website. It is over forty pages long. Then each building has a smaller, shorter, easier to follow action plan on their website. And all of those things come within all of those people and supports that are in place and programs. Each one is sort of broken down into the three tenants or components. Social, emotional development, academic development, and then career development. So when the guidance first came out on this, and I think it was like 2019, we had a lot of work to do because we were missing some really big key components. We didn't have school counselors in every building and that was a piece that was necessary. And career curriculum development, career curriculum we didn't have K five. So those were a big focus for us. And I'm happy to say that now when we do that program assessment, we are fully meeting all of the components that the state guidelines suggest that we should have in place in order to make sure students are successful. As you've heard strategic plans from every building, you're hearing all of the pieces that are embedded in this program. One of the other big pieces we were missing was data or a way to collect data on social, on that social emotional piece. You know, historically in education, we've done a really good job. We know those academic pieces. We have lots of assessments, lots of ways to look at how students are progressing. The social emotional data piece was a little bit more difficult. We historically looked at discipline referrals. We looked at attendance. We know that those aren't the end all. So we had the BIMAS at the elementary level and following COVID, we were able to really implement that at the secondary level as well. And now we have some longitudinal data to look at. And we know that on the SEL side, some of the things that we need to focus on are self-management and self-awareness. And with some of now having a targeted focus, we've been able to embed some of those programs or supports in our plan and be focused and data-driven moving forward from a district level, which is nice. So the, we have a program advisory committee that looks at those pieces regularly. Over the past few years, looking at SEL supports at the secondary level, we have seen a shift in that self-awareness and self-management going down from about twenty-two percent to nineteen percent at risk. And thirty-one percent to twenty-three percent in both of those areas. So again, just slow but steady focusing on those things. The other piece is that we know that when we started, students were self-raiding themselves to be, you know, at risk for harm in alignment with CDC data, which was at about twenty percent. About twenty percent of our students were indicating that took the BIMAS. I see Maya looking at me over there because we know not everybody loves to take it, but of the students that were taking the BIMAS, they were, twenty percent of them were flagging as at risk. And we are holding steady the last two years at about twelve to thirteen percent, which is amazing. And when students are indicating they're at risk, they are connected to services and supports. So that's another big piece. So moving forward as annual goals this year, one of the focuses that we, one of our focuses, two things. We now have curriculum, career curriculum at the elementary level. So getting that into eDoktrina so that we have a place to store it and keep it and be more consistent with it. And then the second piece would be that our, our school counselors at the secondary level meet with each student two times a year. And historically, that focus has been on transitioning career planning and academics, academic planning or scheduling. They're now embedding BIMAS snapshots into that. They're able to pull up students' BIMAs and say, kind of look at that profile and what are you struggling with and use that to guide conversations about personal, social, emotional development as well. And that kind of leads into a lot of which I was going to talk about. Yep, it's a behavior intervention monitoring and assessment system. And it's a screening tool that we use to assess students' social, emotional. At K, sorry, I keep talking, at K, the elementary level, so K six, the teachers rate it. And then in seventh grade, it transitions to where the students actually rate it themselves.
So I'm Jenna Wolken for all those that have not yet. And I'll be talking about district wellness. And so our Student Services Office currently sees our District Wellness Committee, which Carrie oversees. And I oversee our Student Mental Wellness Committee and our District Mental Wellness Committee. And so, you know, these committees have been running for about eight years now. And we're really proud of the work we've done in collaboration with, you know, community members, board members. And we also are partnering with the PE Department, the Food Service Department. Some exciting updates we have with these committees is that we continue to use Team Mental Health First Aid, which I'll talk about in a minute. And we're also very excited to announce our first Community Cafe for Wellness on May eighth. So we hope to see a lot of you there if you can make it. We also are looking to expand what we do for May. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so we have some great ideas from our students, from our staff and community. So we're looking forward to rolling out, including district-wide activities for May. We want to partner with more local communities this time around. And then we also are going to work with our buckshot to enhance the student voice. So last year, I don't know if you guys remember, but we had our, you know, tip of the day from support staff. And so now we really want to have tip of the days from our students moving forward. We also are looking to use Recalls Grant, which Danielle will talk about in a minute. But one thing we want to highlight in the Wellness Committee is, you know, we support our staff so much. We also want to make sure that they have the mental health support that they need. So we want to look at hiring a full-time therapist for our staff. Some more to come on that. And then I'll be talking about Team Mental Health First Aid. And so we are proud to say we have officially trained all Baker students, I'm looking at you. So students grades ten through twelve are all now Team Mental Health First Aiders. And so we actually have three trainers in the room, Danielle, Carrie and myself. We have nine total trainers in the district. And so from October to January, what we did is we ran discussions around important topics such as what mental health is, what is a mental health challenge, and then when does it become a crisis? We also really worked on just de-stigmatizing the language and the conversations to have, you know, open conversations with our students. Part of this program has us fill exit tickets at the end after every session. So again, there's six sessions. And so, you know, just talk about some more data. And after our first session, sixty-four students want to felt support from a support staff. And so we want to make sure that they have accessibility to a support staff within that week. And then after our sixth session, so in January, only ten students need felt support. And it kind of goes to what Carrie was talking about with the BIMAS, that we are seeing a decrease. And what we attribute it to, we hope, is that more students are either being connected with a trusted adult or, you know, getting the mental support that they need. You know, just to move forward, the Team Mental Health First Aid. So we did run it through PE classes this year. And again, we just really wanted to hit students' grades, grades ten through twelve. But now moving forward, we're going to be hopefully hitting it in our health classes. And so this summer, our secondary health teachers will be trained in this to keep it going. Get your answer.
We're saying it sounds, we're just saying it sounds pretty amazing, yeah.
It was a big undertaking, but we're really excited, you know. And I think that the feedback was just was good. But the health, the health classes will allow for more intimate discussions we had because, you know, we talked about some pretty serious conversations, so.
I just want to add that we are a yearly district in the county that was able to pull off training all of their students as well. We started out with a number of districts in the county, through OCS and the COSSER, signing up and then finding out what it entailed, saying, there's no way we can do this. And we stuck it out and accomplished training all of our students. And on to special education. So as you know, you've heard us talk about the blueprint for improved results, so I won't spend too much time on it. Just a quick note about where we are with special education. As you know, you see the frontline reports and so those things change daily. Just a quick snapshot of where we are. We currently have seven hundred and ninety-seven school-aged students who are labeled with a disability. This corresponds currently to a fourteen percent classification rate. The national average is fifteen percent. The state average is twenty percent. Eighty-five percent of our students are supported within a co-teaching model and inclusive programming, and the national average is sixty-six percent. We have a hundred and twenty-two students labeled as having a disability in the preschool age. So there are many components and key principles that are important for students with disabilities. This blueprint by New York State focuses on seven core principles. So I'll just quickly mention the things that we're doing to address self-advocacy. We do self-directed IEPs, transition planning. Schools provide appropriate instruction for work-based learning in our best program. Parents and other family members are engaged. We just actually finished a survey, so we'll have results on that hopefully. Probably not till next year, but we did do a survey with all of our parents as part of an indicator for the state. So more to come on that. We also are, we do a really good job, I think, including our parents in meetings. Most of our parents come and if they don't, we offer, we still offer them a remotely or a phone call. And if they don't come, we can't get ahold of them and reschedule because it's important that they're there. So I think we do a good job with that. Schools, MTSS, you've heard a lot about through the curriculum side, but obviously we have our instructional support team and we use data to drive all of our interventions. And high-quality inclusive programs, I mean, eighty-five percent of our students are inclusive programming. And we really support co-teaching and do a lot of PD, which Jenna will talk a lot about. The next two pieces, which is providing specially-designed instruction and research-based instructional teaching, some of the newer things we're doing this year to promote that. And then club for special champions on May twentieth. Ring date is May twenty-third.
Yes, so Inclusive Schooling, you know, for those of you who don't know what it is, Inclusive Schooling was founded by Julie Costin and Kristi. I can never say her last name, but. And so they're just really, you know, they're national experts on inclusion. And so we've been lucky enough to partner with them. We have been working with them for over ten years. They have a summer leadership institute. So we have had a lot of our staff attend those virtually. And it's been, you know, really helpful for all of our teachers, especially with that specially-designed instruction and just, you know, good teaching with instructional delivery model. You know, this year, thanks to Dr. DeBarbary and his passion for inclusion, that the Baldmanville Leadership Staff, we've been working with Kristi and Julie. What's nice with this is that building principals have created goals to forward inclusion within their building specifically. And then also they help us have real-time professional development for things that we noticed in Neva. So like, and they actually contacted us last week. Kristi and Julie said, you know, what are you noticing in Neva? What can we help support you with? And so now they can offer professional development around topics that we have, you know, targeted and identified for them. And then also, you know, part of our focus moving forward with the inclusive schooling is we really want to help our TAs more. And so there's something that we just purchase called Parabytes. And it's just, you know, it's like kind of like bite-sized chunks of educational opportunities, you know, behavior management, all those things to help support them better.
Any questions for Jenna or Carrie?
So I just want to say, extra support for the teaching assistance is amazing. So thank you so much for doing that. I have a question related to the reports that we get, you know, at the regular board meetings. You know, there's always a number of students who have been referred and then the number of students who did not qualify. What happens to those students that didn't qualify?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to speak to her. You want to? Go ahead. So, because I run a lot of initial meetings in our district. And so, you know, a lot of times it's per request. Other times the building, if they have concern, they bring it forward with, you know, collaboration with a parent. But a lot of the times, you know, it's not a special education issue. And it's nice we ruled it out at that meeting, but we can support the student through other things. Like sometimes it's mental health. Sometimes it's our instructional support teams, our ASD teams can also manage those behaviors or concerns or academic concerns. So it's really come to the table and just really try to figure out the best route for the student, whether it's IUP or not IUP.
Do we transition to elementary?
So the first thing I have up is the science of reading, which I'm sure you've all heard about. It's been the governor's focus. It's, CD released platform papers on it. Basically, you know, Dr. DeBarbary, it's its own separate committee, the science of reading. You know, is, how to learn to read change? No. If we, if we learned more about how they can learn to read, yes. So in the nineties, when I'm getting my master's in literacy, my professor at the time, who had done her doctorate, not for work here, at Eldon Elementary, ironically. And I remember her saying, one part of her work was, you know, you can only get inside the brain of a child to figure out how they read. And her work was sitting side by side with the child, taking records called miscreant analysis and trying to figure out like, why are they making these errors? Discussions with kids. And it was fascinating at the time. Well, since then, we now can get inside the brain of a child, you know, through MRIs. And so the science of reading. And so the Science of Reading is really now saying, what's going on, what's firing those neurons? How do you make new pathways literally in a child's brain with what kind of teaching? So what we've learned is it's really through systematic explicit teaching, which is good teaching in the first place that they're all going to, that helps with this. So what we're doing in the district around it is we have programs already. Whether you've heard of Foundations through the Wilson Program, Hedgerty Phony McAwareness, Words Their Way. These programs are based on the Science of Reading. What we've learned is, you know, how do you use them very effectively? So last summer, we offered a series of institutes for all teachers at the P through six level on the Science of Reading, which many attended, we're repeating them more this summer. And how do you use that information? How do you create what's called a six-step lesson plan when you're working with students in a reading group? And, you know, following very systematically. So what teachers have seen through this is that also, this is why you say we have to keep a half-hour designated a day, every day for Foundations, which we teach, which is phonics-based teaching from preschool all the way through third grade. This is why you have to keep at least fifteen minutes a day on Hedgerty, which is phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, every day from preschool through second grade. And this is why we do Words Their Way, which is really more about how language works in the upper grades from fourth grade through sixth grade. So we gave them more of the why we're doing what we're doing. There's much more to continue to work on with the Science of Reading, and we'll continue to do that. So that's definitely a major focus for us. The math pilot, we'll be getting shortly for approval, the purchase of two math programs. So we've been, at the elementary level, we've had the state modules for ever. So at least nine years now. And the math modules are great, because they definitely forced us to change how we teach math. So we have, and in going through this pilot, it was time to look at materials, because the math modules were never going to change. When we hit the change state of leadership, this commissioner, thank God, said, we're not into curriculum business, we're not into writing materials. And that's what the previous commissioner did with these math modules. So they retired them all and said, you know, districts, we give you the curriculum, you have to just choose the materials and how to teach it. So the teachers realized, they realized, obviously, we needed to look at this. We piloted this past year three different programs at P through six. And P through five is going with Eureka, you're going to get information on that. And Eureka really was the company that created the math modules, so that's a good thing. Sixth grade, rightfully so, I know some people might be like, oh, why aren't you changing? Well, you know, they are leaving elementary, going into a new location, and it's for more academically ready for something different. And they're going to be using something called Desmos, which is really much more computer-based. They're still, you know, consumable with it. But they themselves have seen during the pilot, it created much more math dialogue and math discourse between students, and made it much more collaborative. So those are the two programs that are going to be going forward. And that'll be a huge focus, because that's going to be a lot of PE over the summer, but also during the school year. So the coaches, both with Science of Reading and both with the math pilot, are very, very involved and busy with that. And then reading and report cards. So again, the report card hasn't changed, probably since Danielle was teaching. And I think I helped create the report card today. And again, we need to get that better aligned, much more standards-based aligned. Also, School Tool has always been a place for six through twelve to do the report cards. We haven't had that ability in elementary. The report cards sit in School Tool, it's basically like a PDF, where at the secondary level, they keep their grades in full, but more transparent with parents, and much more easy to manage to get the report cards done. School Tool's moving in that direction, so we want to be ready for it. Along with that, I brought to previous board discussion, moving to a trimester report card instead of quarterly. Because at this age, developmentally, you know, every ten weeks, are you really seeing everything you need to? Where trimesters give more time. And we're seeing that be much more the move throughout the state and across our county major. So you'll be seeing more about that coming. But right now, Danielle and I partnered to work with teachers to start looking at the format of a report card and what are the things that they want to see. And now the hard lift will be over the summer, saying, okay, what are the standards we're going to connect to each of these pieces in the report card? So it's a multi-year project, you know, step to get many years, not many, but multi-years step to get to a final report card, or in that beginning process. So those are the three major goals of the department. Just any questions?
Does everyone question? How much offerings are mandated for elementary educators through PD to get into the Science of Reading? And when do you see the district as a whole really, you know, knees-deep into that throughout all of the elementary?
We're knees-deep in it now, so I don't want to just lead you there. So when we talk about elementary program, elementary teachers are generalists. When you go to school, we learn a little bit about everything. Our secondary teachers are learning just about math. Okay, so that's the big difference in elementary. Why you see more programs, not because they don't know how to teach. They're teaching four different content areas every day, so they need something to hold on to. So whenever we adopt something like Foundations or Hedgerty, it's mandated, everyone goes through their training. We offer it in the summer, I can't mandate you to come in the summer during the school year. It is a whole nother story. So if you don't come over the summer, then we provide that time, which is very difficult because of subs shortage, but we do provide the time that you have to come out of your classroom to go through that training. The Science of Reading, those workshops in the summer, we offer a shortened version of it during a staff development day. But in the summer, it's three days they went through. Again, as we value the different programs, even with the math, it's offered in the summer, but we reserve time during the school year that you go through it if you miss it in the summer.
Shift over to Skina in secondary.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Priscilla Morgan, the Director of Secondary Education. So one of the highlights that we have for this year is our SEALs of Civic Readiness and By Literacy. So the SEAL of Civic Readiness is a formal recognition for students who have attained a high level of proficiency in both terms of civic knowledge, which is like our Regents exams and scoring at certain levels on our US History Regents and other areas, as well as civic participation. So how are you a good citizen day-to-day, volunteering and being involved in your community? So we've had students participating and earning points towards the SEAL of Civic Readiness for several years from both Jerky and Baker. But this year, we were able to roll it out to all of our seventh-grade students at Ray. And I know I saw a lot of you last week attending our students' presentations, and that was so great to see. I think they learned a lot about how to activate or pursue interest to themselves within the school community, but as well as just the basic skills of presenting in front of people you don't know. It's a great opportunity for our seventh-grade students to be able to do that. This, so we have twenty-three students at Baker High School right now who are currently anticipated to graduate with the SEAL of Civic Readiness on their diploma this year. I actually hear one of them. We also have our SEAL by Literacy. This is another formal recognition of high school graduates who have attained a high level of proficiency in both English and one or more world languages. So we do have one student who's actually trying to obtain it in tri-literacy. So they're proficient in three languages. So this year, we anticipate having twenty-two students from Baker High School graduate with that recognition on their diploma. And what's great about that is it really tells future employers that they are proficient in more than just English. For a lot of our students, it's Spanish, and then as well as French and German as well. Our, the second thing I wanted to highlight is our First Amendment First Vote. This was a newly-established opportunity for female identifying students up at the high school. This is a nonpartisan civics opportunity for high school teens to engage in the democratic process and really imagine themselves as in an elective office or professional government-related jobs. So Julie Humphson, who was one of our Soul Studies teachers at Ray, she had previously participated in this program and worked with me to help get our district involved. So this year, we have students attending, we hope to grow it next year even more. Most recently, those students attended a regional seminar in the Syracuse City School District where they collaborated with students from Auburn, Corcoran, Hennecker and Nottingham. The students collaborated to learn about the program, test their knowledge of women's history, and attend roundtable chats with local female leaders, which was a unique experience for many of them. Students close out the day by brainstorming different actions for change that they'd like to pursue in their community. Coming up next, those students will head to Auburn for their annual Leadership Summit, where they will learn and network with female leaders and students from all over New York State. So they'll get a lot of positive exposures there. New course offerings. So this past year, we had several new course offerings. We had Journalism at the eighth-grade level, as well as Drone One at the high school, a digital literacy class at Ray Middle School for seventh-grade students. Our Lifeguard Course that Mr. Campbellita spoke about, and then an astronomy course at the Bupi School. And we've seen positive enrollment numbers in all of those courses. The Digital Literacy Course at Ray is actually, all seventh-grade students go through it. And the great thing about that course is it really teaches them a lot, not only about how to use different things in the computer, but what it means to be a digital citizen and thinking about the things you're putting out there on the internet, which is important at the middle school level. And then next year, what we have to look forward to is we have new course offerings in AP African-American History next year, as well as Intro to Screenplay Writing in the Drone Technology Two course, which has been a big hit at Baker High School. We have approximately thirty students completing the first course now, and they will soon hopefully be certified by the FAA to fly their drones. And then we will roll out Drone Two next year. A lot of awesome opportunities for our kids.
Another question for Skina, transition to Dana.
Good evening, everyone. So the first thing that I just wanted to highlight quickly is a reminder that our interactive district report card is posted right on our district's website. It currently houses all of our data up through the second quarter of the school year, and I will update it as soon as quarter three finishes up. But that report card includes student participation in extracurricular activities. It includes our student achievement on our universal screening measures, in coursework, as well as their attendance and discipline trends. I would say the biggest difference that I noticed from where we were last year at the end of the second marking period to this year, we've seen some improvement in terms of attendance and chronic absenteeism. So we'll continue to monitor that, but that's always a positive sign with having students in school more regularly. And then I'll be back again in the April fifteenth Board Work Session to really dive deeper into our district's data, specifically as it relates to New York State Assessment and Regents data. Our district's report card will highlight and how those tie into our strategic planning. Second, I wanted to highlight our community cafes. These replaced what we've done in the past that were called lunch and learn opportunities. But I hope that the community has found those to be a shift in the way that we offer that opportunity. We are having facilitated whole group and small group conversations with students, parents, staff and community members. So they're structured in a way that provides information about whatever the topic of the evening is, allows for that dialogue, but also some data collection. We're using the Thought Exchange Platform to do that. And we're excited for the future cafe that we have Monday, the twenty-fifth, where we'll dive deeper into project-based learning. Again, we're partnering with our local RMS Research and Marketing Strategies, as we did with our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Cafe. They've already done some work with twelve different employers in the area, conducting some in-depth interviews about the current job market, what are the skills that they're looking for in entry-level candidates, and how can we partner together, which, from what we've heard from Mark, it has been a wonderful experience in partnering with some of these employers. And they're just so excited that the district is doing the work that we're doing and seeking their influence, so more to come with that. And then lastly, as Jenna mentioned, we have been awarded prior approval. We're still kind of holding, still waiting for final approval when it comes to the State Repose Grant that we applied for this summer. So the portion of the grant that we are looking forward to receiving enhances mental health services. The funding that we were awarded is just over five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, but there's a matching component to that that will put us just over a million dollars over technically the next two years, but we're in March of year one. So we'll see where that ends up shuffling out. But again, as part of that grant, really the purpose is rooted in finding community partners and programs or furthering the relationships that we currently have. So we look forward to continuing our work with Onondahie County's Office of Child and Family Services, looking to add some additional access liaisons through that grant opportunity in our work with them. Looking to continue to collaborate with the Baldensville Police Department in some sort of safety coordinator role next school year, as well as our continued partnership with Liberty Resources, looking to add on one of their mental health counselors or therapists dedicated to staff support. So it allows us to do a lot in conjunction with those different partners, but also further the Team Mental Health First Aid Training Opportunities and Youth Mental Health First Aid Opportunities. So Youth Mental Health First Aid allows us to train not only staff members, but parents and community members in what are those look-for, is what are those warning sites, and how can we ultimately de-stigmatize mental health and continue to educate the community about the importance of mental health.
Any questions for Danielle?
I just wanted to say the report that you posted in the Friday letter, was that the report?
Yep.
No, that's just a little data event that you did.
Yeah, it was a data byte.
Oh, well, you wanted to feedback, I liked it. I thought it was, you know, concise, and you could dive deeper, you know, if you wanted to with the following link.
Thank you, yeah. So Data Bytes are a new opportunity that we've incorporated into our instructional leadership meetings with Renee at the helm, and just trying to break data delinquency and these ongoing conversations with our leadership groups, so that then they can take that information and work with their team. So exciting things to come with Data Bytes for sure.
Okay, we'll transition to RJ with technology.
Hello, friends. Let me take the second one first. A lot of us in my department are finding ourselves in the back nine of our career. So I've been spending a lot of time with Dr. Barbary and Kevin to try to make sure that we've got the right people in the pipeline to take over. And we're taking a look at every position as it comes up to see, is this the position that's going to take us into the future, or do we need to tweak them? So we've been working on that for, it seems like forever. And we did do a hire, we had a hire of a new land tech. It's a kid that's been here for a long time, went away to work in another district, and we got him back. So he's a great, he's a great asset to the department. So we'll continue on looking at that as things come. The other thing I wanted to highlight, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes out of the technology department. One of the, one of the items that we are supporting security with is called Mindcast. And we were relying on Google pretty much to figure out what was spam and what wasn't. And a lot of, you know, nefarious content got through. So we have a COSSR with OCS for this product, and it's, basically every in-going and outgoing email goes through them first. And they scrutinize the email for malware, spam, phishing, spoofing, everything. And you probably had to deal with it yourself, but it is a little bit of a pain at first, but it's really, it's really worthwhile. Just as a statistic, so just in February, there was ninety-eight thousand total threats detected. And depending on the severity of the threat is what happens to that email. There were 1,800 spam emails blocked, sorry. There were zero impersonation attacks. There were zero, I'm sorry, there was two malware attacks detected. There was six nefarious links that got clicked, but they don't go anywhere because Mindcast is labeled and it's, it's not good. And then there was one malicious attachment that was stripped out. So this Mindcast is doing the work that, you know, 100 people couldn't do. And we were really impressed with it. So it was, thank you for support on that because it wasn't free. I feel like it's really helping us out. So I just wanted to bring that up again. One of the many things that were going on in our technology department.
Questions for RJ? We will transition to Renee from the area, or whoever she does it in.
No, so fine arts is something that's near and dear to our hearts, obviously. So you can see there are three things that we're highlighting for today's session. The individual approved arts pathway. We were approved last year to start a fine arts pathway in the visual arts for our students this year. So that's something that we're working on so that students can develop a portfolio when they start in eighth grade and work on that portfolio. And if they satisfy all of the requirements, then that will qualify as a plus one for graduation for our students. So of course, the music department got jealous and said, we want one too. And so I think Casey Vanderstel and Christina are working on a individual pathway for the music area as well. So once we get that paperwork put in, the state will review our application. Once they approve that, then we will be good to go with that. And I think this will definitely help us, once the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations have been vetted through New York's State Education Department and the Board of Regents, and we get some information on what that looks like, I do believe that they'll ask districts to provide more pathways like this for our students in addition to Regents exams. The elementary instrumental program has been a phenomenal success. We have kids coming out of the woodwork wanting to play instruments. And so, yes, you have the recognition of, that was fantastic. I mean, really, the, it's really been, it's been a ton of work for, oh, thank you, appreciate that. It's been a ton of work for our staff, but, and Tony, I can say Tony and Christina have taken the land of that and getting the orders in, getting, doing all of the, the in-between of getting those instruments delivered to school and then distributed, and then the staff putting that information in.
Just going to say that Danielle shared some numbers with me comparing last year's school year to this year. Third grade orchestra, we're up 16% participation rate. Fourth grade orchestra and band, we're up 8% participation. Fifth grade orchestra and band, we're up 13% participation. So we know it's just going to look good. It's a good thing.
So, you know, we're currently looking at our numbers for next year, what recruitment will look like, and if there needs to be any more additional purchases for instruments. We're just getting some numbers and getting prepared. Also new this year in fine arts is that we have our high school drama production that will be taking place May 9th, 10th, something like that. So that will be, that will put us at a full use of our theater. So we have a major event in our theater in the fall, winter, and now spring. So it gives our kids tons of opportunities. If they don't want to sing and dance in the musicals, they can now participate in an actual drama production. So we're super excited about that.
Just to put in a little plug for any Harry Potter fans out there, it is Puffs, which I guess is a parody of the Harry Potter books from the perspective of the Puffs. I've never seen Harry Potter, haven't read Harry Potter, but that's what it was. Sorry, but apparently it's a story told from the puff side of things. So we're all looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to be educated, being educated in the Harry Potter.
All right. And just to kind of bring the workshop session to a close, as I alluded to at the beginning, there are the ten priority areas and all of the connections to the conversation today. Eighty-four in total. When you think about increasing school safety and security, it's a priority this year. Expect it to be at the top. And certainly it's exemplifying culturally responsive diversity and equity, another top. And then the project-based learning, which is a priority, as you know, that's an ongoing, based on our plan over the next three or four years, we will see that continue to grow. So I would expect the dialogue and conversation related to project-based learning experiences to increase based on our plan moving forward. But that, this really gives you a great quick reference to all of the work that is going on here in, in our district based on our strategic plan.
Wow. I mean, I'm, I'm just amazed. We knew there was a lot going on, because we don't see the details all the time. But just thank you, thank you. It's so great. I know the Sandra Ruffo, the President of the United States School Board, was here in September, and her, their theme for this year is educating the whole child. It really strikes me that you're doing a great job to educate the whole child. And thank you for all you do for people's needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready. Geez.
You can adjourn.
Motion for adjournment?
You technically don't have to.
Sorry?
No, we can go right in.
Great. Wait, can you pause it then tomorrow?
Yeah, she'll be able to.
Now, you'd like us to adjourn, right, and come back? It's okay? Okay, so we need to adjourn. We'll continue. I guess, we don't need to kick people here though for this, so. Okay, resolve March 18th, 20th, Board of Education Work Session. Be adjourned. Don?
Second, second. Yeah, that's an error. I technically don't have to take a motion on that. You can just
Oh, excuse me.
I'm drawing a motion.
I just started Don out ordering the meetings closed. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you guys.